All right. Anyone wishing to address the board? Nope. Okay. And may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the August 1st meeting, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Motion to approve the agenda, please.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. No conflicts of interest to deal with today. Motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. And we are on to the reports of the president. And the first will be the enrollment report. It looks like Megan is up for that. And Kristi, okay.
President Alberti and members of the board, it's our pleasure to come before you today and present our report for Fall 2018 Enrollment. Last week, if we had given this report right now, we were fully anticipating being able to share with you increased enrollment for Southeast Tech. And as our numbers came in, we saw a significant summer melt that we're going to talk to you about, and where we ended up with a slight decrease in headcount and total credits. But we're still in good shape, and we'll give you the rundown of the facts. So recap of our Fall 2018 recruitment. Applications and admits, as you know, we've shared those slides to you several times, so we're not showing them to you today. But we continued throughout the entire cycle to track slightly ahead in those applications and admits. Like I mentioned, our total headcount and credit hours are slightly down, and we saw a summer melt of 15%. And so that means of the students who attended our Academic Advising and Registration Days, those students who actually paid a registration fee came to an AAR event or were registered through our online AAR and enrolled for Fall classes, they did not matriculate to the 10th day count for enrollment. And so that's what we're talking about for a summer melt. And then we're going to share with you some exciting highlights for Fall 2018 with our enrollment. We do have some good news to share, so we're excited about that.
All right. Although we're only showing the Academic Advising and Registration Day months from April to August, throughout the recruitment year and leading up to the Fall of 2018, we were consistently tracking either ahead or comparable to where we were in the Fall of 17. And when we ran the final numbers on the 10th day, which was August 31st, we found ourselves 33 students down from the Fall of 17, or 1.43% down from the Fall of 17. And that same comparison holds true for the total number of credits. We didn't experience that same spike in August like we saw last year. Rather, we experienced that summer melt that Megan mentioned. Oh, yep. And so if you take a look at the slide, we are down 347 credits, which is 1.24% from the Fall 17 10-day count.
So as you heard a lot, when Russ was on board as the admissions consultant, that the focus was enrollment, enrollment, enrollment for Fall 2017, and that didn't stop. We continued to move up processes like we've shared with you in previous presentations and started the AAR events for last Fall 2017. We made significant improvements on those events. We're going to share with you some of those numbers. And in addition to the admissions side, approving the AAR side, and Kristi and her team of Student Success Advisors did likewise. They were much more intentional in their efforts to retain students, and we'll talk a little bit about that process. So if you look at our five-year comparison data, you can see, again, we're slightly below where we were in Fall 2017, but we are ahead to the previous Fall of 2016 and 2015, but we're not quite to where we were in 2014. Okay, so comparing 2017 to 2018. So those AAR events, in 2017, we put through 1,019 students. This year, we actually saw an additional 161 students attend those events, which was wonderful. But again, that summer melt, those students paid the registration fee, came, got their actual enrollment for Fall, but they did not matriculate to that 10th day count when we take our official numbers. And so of those individuals, we have 1,003 that matriculated to the 10th day. And we look at some more comparisons between 2017 and 2018. We started digging in, and we knew that we were teaching out Nuclear Medicine. So last year, the difference was we had nine students in that NUCMed program that we couldn't enroll, we lost a program to enroll students into, as well as our decreased dual-credit enrollment. So last year, we had 174 students in dual-credit enrollment in 2017, and this year, we have 126. So 48 students different. And we do count those students in our total headcount and in our credit hours. So the discontinuation of the Learners to Leaders Program proved to be pretty significant for us. Last year, we had 34 students enrolled in that program. Now, the good news, on the flip side, is being down a little bit, we're really down in non-program students. So dual-credit students who are taking classes, you know, at an extremely reduced cost. So from a budget standpoint, we're in really good shape. So that is a good news there. And then Kristi's going to share a little bit about the improved processes that we're making on the Student Success side of the House.
With the assistance of Dr. Valdez this Fall, we have put a greater emphasis on faculty getting accurate and timely attendance put into the system. So that information is extremely vital to our Student Success Advisors when they're trying to determine, is a student attending? Is it someone we need to contact? What's going on? So they also were asked to submit early warning alerts. We have a system called Southeast Tech Cares, and it's our retention system where the faculty, actually anyone on campus can go in and submit an alert on a student. You know, today I received one that a family member had passed away, and they wanted us to know that so that I could notify the rest of the instructors that that's why the student wasn't there. So our Student Success Advisors were receiving those alerts, contacting those students right away, and finding out what was going on. Are you planning to be here? And in many cases, those calls resulted in students getting to class and going and getting caught up. And in some cases, the calls resulted in, no, I won't be coming to Southeast Tech this Fall. And so with that, we follow up and say, we encourage you to apply for the spring semester or maybe the Fall 19 semester is a good start for you, too. The Student Success Team this summer, with the help of the Southeast Tech IT Department, has a great tool now that is similar to what Megan and the admissions counselors have with their JRM software where they can track their candidates. Now, our Student Success Advisors can log in. Ours is on a very small scale compared to what she has, but it's working really well. The advisors log in, they see only the advisees that are assigned to them. And in previous years, only students who were degree-seeking had a Student Success Advisor. This year, every student, whether they're coming in as an undeclared student, just taking a class here or there, is assigned a Student Success Advisor, because those are hopefully potential students that we have coming into a program. So they're able to go in, look at their advisees, and they can see at a glance, who hasn't been attending class? How many absences have they had? When was their last graded assignment? Do they have any graded assignments? And those are those students that they can focus on right at the top of the list. Contact them right away. So this year, again, talking about moving processes up, usually the Student Success Advisors would get around to being able to contact students the second week. This year, on the third day, they were already contacting those students who hadn't been attending Monday and Tuesday to get them into class. So we just see a lot of potential processes that we can incorporate and make better to increase the success of our students.
All right, so some highlights for this Fall. So out of all of our programs, we're seeing 79% improvement in increased or flat enrollments for 79% of our programs. And I just pulled out some of the most significant ones that you can see there. So Medical Coding, 48% increase. You can go down the list. Turk Management, a small program for us, but saw a significant increase from nine to 13 students. Early Childhood has been a program that we have struggled historically with getting enrollment there, so up 31%. And I should note that these numbers that I'm sharing with you aren't all new students, they are the total students in those programs. Accounting, 42 to 54 students, so 29%. LPN is really a great story. They always have the capacity to take 56 students in for a cohort. They have never started with that. This year, we started with that. And that's part of those, looking at our processes in admissions. So tracking those students closely rather than just capping a program when we have that many accepted, we're continuing to follow up and say, are you still planning to come? Making sure they have their prerequisite courses accounted for, that they've met all the requirements. So 55 students in there is wonderful compared to what we've had in the past. Surge Tech, I can't remember if it was last time or a couple board meetings ago, Ruby was here talking about that program and how they were increasing enrollment, so that's a significant increase. And then Autotechnology increased 19% as well. An additional highlight that I want to share with you, now, again, these are non-credit-bearing programs, so we can't count these individuals in our numbers. So they're not in our total headcount, and they're not in our total credits, but it's the improvement that we're seeing in our apprenticeship programs. And we're excited about this because we're still meeting workforce development needs, and we're still providing a pathway to professional success for many individuals. And you can see the numbers there in Dental Assisting Apprenticeship with 12 students, Carpentry, six. The Plumbing Apprenticeship, we don't have those numbers finalized, but we're estimating 10. And then the Summer Carpentry Pre-Aprentice that you have heard about previously, started with 10, ended with 10, so we're excited about that. And finally, I just really want to stress to you, as we look at these processes, we're overall pretty pleased with where we landed considering the facts that we shared with you today, but it's really about setting our students up for success. So when we do talk about the summer melt, we want to find ways that we can have more contact with students during the summer in the future, but also, but if the time is not right for students beginning college and take on that debt, we need to advise them appropriately. So when they're ready and in a better place, that they come back to Southeast Tech and they remember that they had a good experience, and hopefully, we will see them again in the future. So thank you. Do you have any questions for us?
With the 15% summer melt, do we track what that number, that percentage normally is per year?
We haven't tracked that in the past, but it is something that we're going to look at so that we can look in years past, so we can track that and see where we're trending with that.
So that, again, was our AAR numbers that we were focusing on. And remembering that last year, I wasn't here, but my understanding is that was kind of at the 11th hour, we started the ARs and got those up and running. So this year, we did track it, and we will, for sure, going forward.
Maybe I didn't hear, did you just start the attendance checking with the students to see what?
We've always done the attendance checks, but it's been more intentional this year.
Sure.
It has, with Dr. Valdez's assistance, him encouraging those faculty to get that in and get it in today because we want to know right now. We had Student Success Advisors that were checking their lists at 1:00 and saying, oh, I got to see if Johnny was here this morning. And at 2:00, okay, he was here, all right? Okay, he's not on my, he's on my safe list now. So it's been a very, it's been a very successful tool for us to have Dr. Valdez in on that whole process.
And, you know, the whole feeling of you care about the students.
Exactly.
I think that just adds more to that atmosphere.
Yes. And it's helping us connect with those students and letting them know that we are here, we care, we know what's happening, and you're not going to fall through the cracks at Southeast Tech.
Great. Thank you.
I think the other thing to add is as they're following up, you know, asking why is important. Sometimes the answer is financial, sometimes, I just looked at the list, but, you know, a couple health concerns, some who just said they decided that they just can't do it now with their life situation. So that's good to know, too.
It's opportunity just to find out more and either stay in touch or...
And it helps us determine what services do we need to provide in the future.
Right.
All those things.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. May I have a motion to acknowledge the enrollment report, please?
So moved.
I know it's not the report you wanted to give, but I'm pleased that the processes that have been put into place, the tracking that has been implemented gives us real-time number sooner. So, you know, I wish it had been an increase rather than a decrease, but I think the hard work that has gone into it is going to pay off. So, you know, we've got an exciting Fall started, we've got the 50th Anniversary Celebration coming, we've got a lot of good things going, and I think we just try and, you know, pick back up and move forward and continue to be positive.
Yep. Definitely.
And I think, too, just to add to the Learners to Leaders piece of that, too, that was a big loss for Southeast Tech, but I think that was an equal loss to the students who participated.
Yes.
So I know that there are efforts being made to try to reinstate that program, whether it's the same or slightly different or whatever that might look like. So those efforts are much appreciated, obviously for the staff at Southeast Tech, but students, too, who really do look for that opportunity to change their lives going forward. So hopefully, we can get something similar back next year and have that impact your numbers in a positive way and the students as well.
That's right. I mean, as new opportunities come forward through Learners to Leaders hopefully reemerging as well as new programs, that's only going to give us more opportunities in the future.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Aspire to Tech Report. Tracy.
President Alberti, members of the board, it's my privilege to introduce our next speaker to talk about Aspire to Tech, and that is Jenny Keys. Jenny has been with Southeast Tech since 1997. She started as a part-time instructor in the Adult Educational Literacy Center, which is now the Hovland Center. She moved into a full-time role in 2002, and she has been the leader of the Hovland Learning Center since 2006. The Hovland Learning Center works with individuals, adults, who need to increase their basic skills in English, math, reading, those people who are going towards their GED and need preparation for that, and also English as a Second Language learners. And so it's always done those things, but this new one is really, really exciting and I think can have a huge impact on the workforce in Sioux Falls. And so we're very excited to have Jenny here to talk to you about Aspire to Tech. Jenny.
Good afternoon. As Tracy said, I'm Jennifer Keys. I'm the program coordinator for the Adult Education Literacy Program at Southeast Tech, and I would like to thank you for the opportunity to present information on our new program, Aspire to Tech. Aspire to Tech is a division of the Adult Education and Literacy Program at Southeast Tech. Our goal is to improve basic skills in reading, math, and language through content-specific instruction, preparing students for enrollment into post-secondary education or employment. Students will receive sector-specific instruction while learning reading strategies, grammar rules, and math skills. Eligible students for the Aspire to Tech program are beyond compulsory attendance age, possess a valid social security card for alternate supporting documentation, they are withdrawn from high school, and they have a minimum grade equivalent of a 4.0 to an 8.0 in reading and language on a TAB test, which is the test of adult basic education. This program is funded through the Adult Education and Family Literacy Act with WIOA Title II funds and state funds. Students are only responsible for purchasing books and materials. Department of Labor and Regulations, WIOA Title I program can help students with the cost of those books and materials if that's a hardship for the student. Curriculum for the Intro to Healthcare and Manufacturing Safety courses have been developed. The next cohort of the Introduction to Healthcare will begin actually on September 10th, not September 5th, which is listed on the slide. We have a couple of students who are interested in joining the class, but they need to complete some assessments, so we have delayed the start of the class, and those students were referred from the Department of Labor and Regulation. The first Manufacturing Safety Class is set to begin on Tuesday, September 17. Early Childhood and Business curriculum will be developed in the spring. These classes are designed, again, as an introduction to a field with a focus on improving basic skills. The Intro to Healthcare class will meet Monday, Wednesday, and Friday for three and a half hours each morning. We will focus on instruction in medical terminology, healthcare practices, which includes a lab with a CNA instructor to practice skills, and basic anatomy. Each class in the Aspire to Tech program will include reading strategies, writing, and work ethic training, along with math skills specific to each sector. We have completed one cohort of the Intro to Healthcare class with only two students enrolled, but both did receive passing grades. We took field trips to the Good Samaritan Society and Sanford Hospital to tour facilities and to learn more about the jobs that are available in healthcare. The first cohort of the Manufacturing Safety Class will begin Tuesday, September 17 and meet through November 15. We will meet Tuesday and Thursday afternoons. Instruction will be focused on safety practices in the workplace, math skills specific to manufacturing, and again, the reading strategies, writing, and work ethic training. Students enrolled in these classes through Aspire to Tech will also have the option of preparing for the Work Keys Assessment, which is the assessment used for the National Career Readiness Certificate. Each class will have work ethic activities through the Bring Your A Game and Skills to Pay the Bills curriculum with the option of a state-issued certificate. With each new sector, we research options for program-specific certificates. At this point, we do not have any sector-specific certifications available for the healthcare or manufacturing sectors, but we are looking into some options through the state for the early childhood sector. We did research offering the OSHA 10 training with the Manufacturing Safety Class, but after meeting with an OSHA trainer, it was determined that the population we are serving through this program would not have the reading skills necessary to successfully complete that program. And that is all I have for you. Do you have any questions at all?
You mentioned that students are referred from the Department of Labor. Are there other places that you also get referrals from?
We have had referrals, not necessarily for this program, but this is where the information goes to. We work with vocational rehabilitation. We work with Title I and Title III down at Department of Labor, so the old, what you would think of as job service and the skills training program. We work with Lutheran Social Services. We work with the Sioux Falls School District, Parent University. I should have listed them, but there are several different entities that we're working with to kind of advertise this program.
Sure. Yeah, it just, it sounds like a really good opportunity for the people who attended and the opportunities for them to have workforce or options in the workforce after completing something like this would be enormous. So I was not aware of this, so thank you very much for the information. I appreciate it.
Thank you for having me.
So I saw the times were like 8:30 to noon and noon to 4:00, the class timeframes. Have they, has it ever been looked at for evening? Like, has that ever been an issue for people who might have a job, like, to conflict with that? Or have we had to look at nighttime classes or...
We find that most of our students who fall into this level are already working in the evening.
Evening, anyway.
So that's why we've offered morning classes and afternoon classes. Evening certainly would be an option.
All right. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
May I have a motion to acknowledge the Aspire to Tech Report, please?
Salute.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Look forward to seeing that grow.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. And 50th Anniversary Report.
I'm Margaret Panok. I work with Communications and Community Representative, and this is Shelley Unruh, our Foundation Director. And we're kind of presenting together because we're actually on a committee together to put this all. We have some really hard-working people at Southeast Tech that have taken time out of their regular job to help out with this. We've been meeting weekly to make sure everything's pulled together. So it's, I just wanted to let you know that we do have an event that's coming up, but this is also something that we're planning on celebrating the entire year. So the tagline for it is Igniting Careers for 50 Years, because the focus is always on our students and what they've brought to our community. And so what we started out with this year that we've done a long time ago, but what kind of lost in favor, so we had some people pick it up again this year, was the parades. So they got out to local parades, and they showed our logo. These are the different parades we're at, Crooks Community Days, Harrisburg Days, Garrettson, Jesse James Day, Tee Pot Days, Valley Springs, Sioux Falls Parade Lights is coming. So we haven't done that, I think, since probably the 80s. It's been a long time. So we're excited to have that happen again. President Griggs was president at many of these parades, so that's been really nice to see our president out into the community and welcoming the community onto our campus. So that's one thing that we've done. Part of the 50th, too, has been to try to define what our campus is. It's amazing how many people, when you drive around Sioux Falls and ask if they know where Southeast Tech is, they have no idea. So the nice thing is we have a big, beautiful campus. The hard part is it's a little undefined. So we've been working on trying to define that a little bit better. So if you visit our campus, you'll see that we took some of the funding that we were allotted to give some campus signage on the Boulevard. So Shelley, if you want to go through those. Those line from end to end of our campus. That helps out a little bit. We also get traffic from CTE and New Tech High, so this is also serving another purpose in that it's helping with our recruiting efforts. Helps us make it look a little bit more collegiate. Then the first event that we have coming up, I'm going to let Shelley talk to you about because it's pretty exciting. It's a historical event for us, so go ahead.
Yes, and this has been a long time in the works. I remember being in front of you back in November and December when we first broached this subject, and there has been a lot of work done since we first approved Southeast Tech Going Forward in a Capitol campaign. We have been in the silent phase for a number of months and have reached the point where we're ready to exclaim all of the wonderful work that we've done. However, I'm not going to release any details about it today because I want you to come to our press conference on September 13th at 10:00, where we will share the wonderful work that's been done in the campaign thus far and what you can look forward to coming up.
So that's the first thing we have on the 13th, is 10:00 in the morning. Then at 4:00, we start with a celebration on campus. And the celebration on campus is really more, it's semantic, but I wanted to explain it to you. It says 50 years. And the reason it doesn't say 50th Anniversary, we also have a 50th Anniversary artwork, but the 50 years is to really say thank you to our community for supporting us, because Southeast Tech would not be where Southeast Tech is today if we didn't have the support of the folks that are going to Southeast Tech, the industry partners that are helping Southeast Tech be successful. So really, this community celebration is exactly that. We're inviting people onto our campus. I don't know if you all have had the pleasure of visiting our campus and taking tours of our campus, but when people come to our campus, they're always amazed at what we have there to offer. So this is also an excellent opportunity for us to recruit. So people may have never seen Southeast Tech before. We have over 20,000 alumni who we're hoping will take the time to come back and visit us. We have lots of industry supporters. This is an industry-supported event, so we do have sponsors that are helping us out with that. We have a lot of retirees. We have a retiree on our committee that has done wonderful work. We have a retiree on our committee that has done wonderful work, volunteering her time to reach out to folks. I think she said she had a list of over 300 that she thinks may come to the event that are excited to come back and see what Southeast Tech has evolved into. So, we're doing lots of really great things for that piece. So, it's really a nice time for us to showcase our campus. We are having a concert at 7:00. I hope you guys can all be there, but the event actually starts at 4:00. The reason we're starting at 4:00 is because we wanted our students to stay on campus. So, we're starting a little bit early. We're going to get over at about 8:30. And then, from there, we actually, this came from the retiree, she wanted to have an after-party at the Ramkota so that people would be able to go to the Ramkota, the retirees, prior employees, alumni, that sort of thing, to really go back and reminisce because that would be a better time to do that. So, that's what's happening afterwards. So, it's going to be a really fun night. And then, we have another event on the 20th that Shelley's kind of been heading up on our campus.
So, we look forward to a new day in Tech Ed, and a new day in Tech Ed means that Mike Rowe of Dirty Jobs will be visiting Southeast, or will be visiting Sioux Falls, and we are fortunate that he is going to visit two crowning jewels of the Sioux Falls School District, not only Southeast Tech, but CTE Academy. When it comes to the event at Southeast Tech, it's going to be later on in the afternoon. It will be a public, or it will be a closed event to the public, so it will be an invite-only event. However, we are inviting our close industry partners and community liaisons that have helped us build Southeast Tech. All of you are included on that list and will be definitely receiving an invitation as soon as we get those and can send those out. But it's going to be a very monumental event, I think, an important opportunity for our students to hear directly from a nationwide advocate for career and technical education.
Right. And just so you guys know, too, employees and students are also on that list, so that's really important to us, that our students are having that opportunity because that's really what he's visiting our campus for. So, just in case it didn't come across clearly, they are definitely the number-one group that we're going to try to get in attendance there. In January, we are planning an industry meet-and-greet with retirees and with our industry partners. So, again, letting them have that opportunity to meet each other, see what's changed. Our retirees are also another group that we're hoping will start supporting Southeast Tech. So, it's no different than alumni in the fact that they have a stake in Southeast Tech and its success. So, that's another group that's really a great group of folks that we're going to try to really kind of work into that foundation and make that relationship stronger than what it has in the past. And that's the whole point of that group. We are putting some timelines together. This is kind of fun stuff, especially if you're not 50. So, there's a couple of fun things. We started out with 118 students. It was $40 a month to go to Southeast Tech, so I always thought that would be interesting to see how our CFO would try to make money work these days with that. But then, I think in 1988 it was, the Sioux Falls School District actually paid $205,000 for the land that the school's sitting on. So, I can't even imagine what it would be worth today. So, there's just some really fun pieces there. And again, we really want to celebrate our history and talk about where Southeast Tech has been and what we have achieved. And that's what we have to talk about today. Do you guys have any questions?
Any questions for Margaret or Shelley? Lots of work. Thank you.
It's been fun. It's been a lot of fun.
Well, we hope to see you on the 13th for a great morning of exciting news, and then, following that, a wonderful community celebration.
I'll be out on the 20th, too.
Yes. Yeah, absolutely, on the 20th as well. That's, it's exciting. Mike Rowe will be touring, not only, not only will he address our employees and our students and industry partners, but he will actually get to tour the amazing facilities that we have in our automotive and our diesel labs. So, it's really a nice opportunity to showcase really what we have to offer. And Southeast Tech was fortunate enough to have a scholarship winner from Mike Rowe Scholarship attend Southeast Tech. Now, he didn't graduate from the program because he, we trained him so well that industry took him before he could graduate. So, it's not the greatest story, but it is still very indicative of how well we train our students and the skill set that we provide them so early on that a student has the opportunity to leave school that early to go gain, fully employed, and be successful.
Right, and he did attend the HVAC program, and he is working in HVAC. So, he did transition into the workforce and is meeting a critical need, so we're happy for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work.
May I have a motion to acknowledge the 50th Anniversary Report and Update?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Thank you for all the work, everybody at Southeast Tech, it sounds like the committees and so forth, and meeting and going over and above the normal workflow to put on a fabulous event, so thank you very much.
All right. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Bob?
President Alberti and council members just wanted to pass along some very tragic news over the weekend. One of our students, Brady Patterson, the second-year collision repair student, was killed in a traffic accident. And so, very tragic event, and on behalf of Southeast Tech, wanted to take this opportunity to express our condolences to the family. And I know our students and one of his instructors, Mike Wendell, has already met with the family, and we understand that they had a good meeting and a good opportunity to talk about how proud they were of Brady and what a good student he was. And my short time at Southeast Tech, I had a chance to meet with those students as well, and they are obviously very, very hurt by that news, but I think proud of Brady and who he was and that he was connected to Southeast Tech, so I just wanted to pass that along. And then, also, a quick welcome to Dr. Benjamin Valdez, our new Vice President of Academic Affairs. So, very excited to have him on board, and we've talked about him in the past. You haven't been here for that, Benjamin, but we've mentioned your name a few times, so, and he's already having an impact just in the couple of weeks, as you heard from Christie and Megan earlier in terms of admissions. And it's great to see that level of cooperation between academics and admissions and student success, and I think we've got a lot of very good things happening on campus, so it's nice to see that, and thank you for that. And we'll provide an opportunity to meet with him just after the meeting concludes, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bob. All right. Next item on the agenda is the second reading for policy JICK and its accompanying regulation. It's a new sexual misconduct policy that we've worked on at Policy Review at a couple of meetings. It has been reviewed by the attorneys to make sure that we're addressing all of the items that need to be in this sort of a policy, and we've been assured that we are the, you know, as with all of our policies, whether at STI or in the school district, they are things that, as new regulations come forward, we can make changes if we need to, but I know that there's been tremendous amount of work put into this to make sure that it is meeting the needs of a post-secondary sexual misconduct policy. So, I would move for approval of second reading of the JICK.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? That has been out on the STI website and on the district website. Been no comments come in on that, so if there's any discussion, we'll certainly accept that. If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. And any other business to come before the board? If not, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We adjourned. Thank you.